The committee is supposed to call to order. We're just going to have to stay on recess until we get a quorum. Thank you for the people who went on for tuning in. We'll just be waiting until we reach a quorum. Thank you. We're still in recess. I'll return back to recess. The committee of the whole is called back to order. I'd like to ask first the Sergeant Arms to swear in, Ms. Llewellyn-Turley, the chief analyst for OIB.
Please raise your right hand. Under penalty of perjury, do you affirm that any and all information that you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God. Sir, she's under oath. You may proceed.
Thank you, Sergeant Arms. And I just remind the panels that you are all still under oath. So we'll move on. Because we're on our second round, and it was asked earlier that we, I guess, change the direction. So we're going to begin with Senator Jim Willen, then go down this way, and then work our way to... Huh? Senator, you were the last one? On the second round, we started with Senator Perez. Oh, just a motion to recess only. That was all. Okay? So we'll begin with an advice to my colleagues. Gida is on their way. Tina Garcia should be here shortly. So I believe we can go ahead and continue. And then if there is a specific question for Gida, we'll come back to the colleague that wants that one question answered, or two questions answered of Gida. That being said, we'll begin on our second round with Senator Jim. You have five minutes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the committee presentation last week, and appreciate the additional information we'll be seeking from you today. So maybe what I'd like to see is just a little bit more expansion and explanation. Of course, both things are such things as the money requirement and also the facility requirement. This is obviously something that we need to do, but maybe you can further explain for us the necessity and also on the funding. So the first question was, I know where we're going with the bill on this funding, but would there be any alternative fundings that is possible that we could also look at? And the second question would be for the facility, right? We're always looking at, of course, could we afford this now? But maybe on the facility, what DOC envisions? What, the further do we delay this, or if we don't move forward with this, what are the consequences that we will be experiencing? So two questions there regarding the money as alternative and not moving forward or delaying this process. What are the consequences that we will be looking at? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. If any of the panel would be willing to answer that. We'll start with Mr. Byrne.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll start with the funding. You know, senators, for the very first time, we are looking at these major capital projects and really identifying funding for these projects, which is something that we haven't been able to do before because the funding for these simply wasn't available. And that accounts for the current state of affairs at DOC, and that's what we're trying to correct by identifying and eventually spending on a new facility, a big capital project, which obviously requires identified funding. We have been pretty successful in getting federal funding over the last two or three years, funding for things that previously were either unfunded or underfunded. So you may be sure that we will lose no opportunity to try and get federal funding to make up any gaps that could possibly be identified in this funding of this facility. You know, as you saw, Phase One and Two together are $109 million. That's a considerable sum of money. But with the sale and leaseback, well, it's not really a sale, it's just a leaseback, as we determined on the previous bill, you don't have to start paying out the money until the project is completed, although there are certain aspects of it, like the A and E and site preparation and things like that, that you might want to finance upfront. This bill provides for $5 million for fiscal 2022, and then $5 million thereafter. I believe Gida said that the capital amount that could be available from that was around about $77 to, I guess, $80 million, depending on interest rates. I think Ms. Garcia took a conservative interest rate, but if you took current interest rates, the amount that could be available is something just over $80 million, which of course leaves some money to be funded. The administration will always be able to find that money somehow to make that funding, but that process can't start until we get this bill made into law. We house federal prisoners at the DOC facility, so that's an obvious place to look for funding. I'm sure the director there will tell us exactly how many and what proportion of the inmates are federal prisoners. But we certainly need to sort of go and find out how much is available from federal forces, federal sources, to finance that. But we will always be, you know, in all of these capital projects, just like the other one, the hospital and healthcare that we were discussing previously, we will always be able to find the funding. We have always said here, in front of rating agencies, in front of everyone that cares to listen to us, that debt service is our first obligation. We will always pay debt service, and that's what's got us to the point where we have been able to improve the ratings, and that's got us to the point where we have been able to maximize or optimize the credit terms, and, you know, in particular, the interest rate, or the effective interest rate, that we're able to achieve on our borrowings. So that will be our message to them. That's our message to you, that we will always be able to pay debt service because we regard it as our first and most solemn obligation.
Does anyone else on the panel like to answer that question? The possibility of if and if not? Mr. Komachi, would you like to comment?
Well, sir, of course, we're going to look at every avenue to include with the governorcy, what possibly we can have. Again, we're open to any kind of suggestions, and we're going to look at every single avenue to get the revenues that we need. But I think Mr. Byrne's already spoke what those issues are.
All right. Major Ogden, I see you've got the mic. Do you want to make comments?
Yes. So Senator Willen, you asked, you know, basically, if we don't move this bill forward and we don't, we do not move forward this project, what is going to be the consequences? Well, as we know, the current prison is beyond its useful lifespan. It's dangerous to employees, inmates, and obviously, we lack the space needed to run effective programs. Okay? The, for example, the square footage right now for the medical side, we're looking at probably 1,000 square feet. What we're asking for is about 11,000 square feet in the new facility. If, for example, we decide not to move forward this plan, and you want to just build a $30 million jail in Manila and leave it at that, we're going to be back here again, we're going to have issues with staffing it. The support mechanisms will not be in there, medical, dental, and behavioral that we need will not be there. We'll basically be doing the same thing that's been done for years. You put a new building there to address the need now, but over years, it's still going to cost a lot more money in just maintaining, running it, and staffing it, and it does nothing for the older buildings. And we can decide to spend millions of dollars on renovating a lot of the older buildings now. In my opinion, that would be just wasteful spending, because eventually, the structure of the buildings themselves are terrible. And, you know, we're going to be just wasting a lot of money renovating them, but it does nothing for our bed space, and it does nothing for our space that we need for programming, to do all the different programmings we need. So this bill is very critical to basically changing how the Department of Corrections operates and fulfills its mission, not just for today or tomorrow, but for the next 60 years or more, 80 years. Our plan is 80 years at least. Our plan is 80 years at least. So again, it's really up to this body on which way they want to go. We're just here to say that, again, if we don't move forward, and it's, the construction itself, as you all know, even if the bill's passed today, it's still going to take several years to get this, get this project shovel-ready all the way to when we actually start building it. And in the meantime, we have to operate our current facility. So we have to do our maintenance and continue operating under what, when the conditions we do. But hopefully, if this thing passes, there will be some adjustments in the next few years as far as, you know, what we're spending on personnel, maintenance costs, increasing our rehabilitation programs, safety for staff, safety for visitors, and actually just basically doing a better job in fulfilling our mission of doing our best to make sure that these inmates, when they return to the community, are better prepared than what some of them are now. And again, it's really up to this body to do this.
Thank you, Major Uggan.
Yeah, I would like also to mention.
Let me just say something.
Just a few, hello?
Let me, let me, so Senator, in addition to what the major is saying as far as consequences, if this bill doesn't go through and the funding mechanism doesn't get approved, I said earlier in my statement, my opening statement, this is very vital to the Department of Corrections and its operations. This master plan was kicked down the, I mean, it continues to get kicked down the road, okay, for many years. It's been there, and I've said it before and I'll say it again, okay? This is the first time that it's ever gone this far, okay? We made progress. We don't want to stop that progress. The progress moving forward is to get this through and fund it so that we can start a new prison and save the island of Guam, the community, the payers, the taxpayers, a lot of money that's been wasted because of this new, I mean, because of this old prison that still exists. There's a reason why we're all here. We don't want to keep kicking this can down the road and continuing to kick this can down the road and passing it, passing the buck, you know, to other senators or other legislators, you know, to deal with. We need to make it happen. This is the opportunity to make things happen right now, you know? Today is the day that we need to make this happen. We continue to spend millions of dollars, 3 million maybe at the minimum per year on overtime alone. And we continue to come in here every budget cycle and we ask for money for overtime, to pay overtime. Why? Because we have personnel that continue to quit. And the reason why they quit is look at the environment that they work in. I don't think any one of you guys, I know I wouldn't want to work or stand in their place and work in a dilapidated facility, you know, with all the safety hazards and all the security issues that exist up there. People are going to continue to quit. The recruitment and retention is going to be very difficult to maintain. And we're going to continue to deal with the overtime issue every year that we come in here. And then we're going to get questioned, why is the overtime so high? Well, that's the reason, okay? I actually can't continue to come in here and answer that question, why is the overtime so high when we all know the reason why? We don't have enough people. That existing design up there of that facility is very difficult to man. You have 18 posts that are all spread out. It takes at least 350 officers to man the existing facility. We only have 190 right now. But if you, if this prison bill that we're trying to move forward gets approved, we can cut that down to at least a half of that 350 people that we need. Because why? Everything is consolidated in this new prison. It's going to be easier to respond. You're going to have less people that you're going to need to move around. Contraband is an everyday issue. You know how easy it is to just throw contraband over that fence, both, in both facilities, Hagana and Manila? So we get that every day. We have to deal with that in addition to all the security issues that we, and safety issues that we have to deal with. This prison bill is very important and very vital to the people of Guam. If we don't move this forward, then I don't know when the next time is going to be where we're going to have the opportunity to do something about it and make things happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Senator Martin, do you have anything else? Nothing else? Senator Duñez, do you have any questions for the panel?
Situas, Massey, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to make a brief statement first, and I just have one follow-up question. I wanted to reiterate the comments that I made on Friday afternoon, that I want to congratulate and thank the team from DOC for probably one of the most comprehensive master plans that I've seen in my time in government. I took some time again to try to read the rest of it over the weekend, but it's very well put together. You know, Mr. Carbalew, you're right. I mean, I even remember back in the 32nd, there was a discussion on the table about maybe even privatization. I know Major knows about that. And one of the reasons why, and even Mr. Camacho, one of the reasons why I was attracted to reading this master plan was, I remember the discussion during the time, and this is even a national issue, that a privatization of prisons sometime encourages incarceration. And so that was a model that was looked at, that to build, operate, transfer is a good idea, but to privatize, the government should always be kind of taking a look at that. And that's why, once again, outside of the comprehensiveness of the program, very few times have we seen, you know, anyone come before this legislature that shows whereby at a minimum, half of its debt service is covered by eliminating overtime and expenditures. So I think you're absolutely right. It's important for us to move forward. Mr. Byrne, in the absence of Gita, I think it's, we can't overstate this issue. I know that you participate and your team participates whenever grants are put together in terms of financial analysis and the like. And I wanted to just ask you a direct question to put it on the record again. How much is a government's commitment to financing important to leveraging potential federal grants and opportunities?
Almost, thank you, that's a very good question, Senator. On almost every occasion where I, certainly personally, just speaking personally, sat in front of federal officials, they want to know that we're not just going to fall back on them in order to fund or run or in any way administer our own responsibilities. They're willing to help, you know, and I think we mentioned in our, when, in our recent visit to DC, even those agencies that normally wouldn't have entertained us, entertained us and suggested, you know, that we go from one agency to the other in order to put together, to assemble funding for our capital projects. Because everybody realizes that in particular Guam, but the United States in general, has fallen behind world standards in capital projects. The detention facility is one such. And Director Carbalew very eloquently spoke about the, about the conditions there. And we want to, and we've, we've applied special processes to encourage people to be employed there. But it's difficult and the, and the rate of people leaving is higher than in other agencies because of the conditions there. We certainly, when we go and talk to the federal people who have the purse strings, you know, they will certainly be interested that we can reduce operating expenses by a capital expense. I mean, that's, that's the classic way that you justify a capital expense is that you can reduce operating expenses. And in this case, the operating expenses reduction seems to be more than usual. I mean, it's a large number. And so I'm confident that we can, we can find those funds from federal sources by going and talking to a lot of people, but find these funds we must.
So just one final follow-up to Director Carbalew and Deputy Camacho. How much do you intend to use this as a recruiting tool in the event that this comes to fruition as this bill passes to encourage recruiting and retention for your employees, saying better days are ahead?
We intend to use it to the fullest extent as possible. I mean, of course, you know, the working environment is the, is, it's, it's the most appealing to recruiting, right? And then retention is also, you know, of course, is going to be a very optimistic for people to just continue to stay and instead of retiring or, you know, or moving elsewhere. This is, this is going to provide the working environment that's much needed, you know? I mean, corrections work itself is already difficult as it is, right? And you, to top that off, working in a, in a poor working environment, it's, you know, it's just a, it's just a bad thing. It's a bad mix. So at least, if anything, give them the working environment that they need, you know, to produce and be productive.
Well, sir, I just want to say that, you know, as far as recruiting, you know, there's very few people who, straight out of the academy, who want to become a correction officer. We're not looking for just anybody, really. We have a very strong internal academy that they have to go through. It's a valuing process and it takes a certain kind of person who wants to, it's kind of like the few, the proud Marines. There's a few proud of the correction officers. And, you know, just imagine you, as a correction officer, you're there, maybe with another partner, and you have over 100 inmates that you have to manage in a unit. It's just overwhelming. And you have to have a certain kind of a spirit to be in this thing. So that's, you know, I want to let, once we start getting this prison together and, you know, we're going to, of course, promote it and we're going to be very proud. We have a very strong training within our institution and it's going to be enhanced because we're going to have different types of facilities for that, for those correction officers. We're going to have a lounge for them also for their breaks and their 12-hour shifts. But, and then we're going to have technology. We're going to have a secured facility. That alone will be a very great incentive because people will be safe, the families will be safe, families will be, you know, won't be worried. So I think once we get this thing started, it's going to be, it's going to, it's going to have a life of its own. It's going to be a great opportunity for everybody.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Situas, Massey.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Senator Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you here for your continued effort to seeing this too fruition. And I know that this has been a longstanding goal, especially with Major Uggan. This is something that he's been working for many, many years to accomplish. And so I'd really like to acknowledge your efforts and hard work. I mean, you can breathe almost, you know? And also to recognize that this facility is intended to assist our officers. And I spoke earlier with you about how can we utilize this for our advantage to help them with battle fatigue, to help them deal with the stress of the job. And, you know, Director, I appreciate the comments that you said. This is something that you guys are looking into, especially, Rob, sorry, you know, the things that you were saying to, you know, introduce programs for the officers to help them shift also the mindset when the new facility is built because it will require a different type of mindset. And, you know, I, you know, I want to, I want to thank you and the DOC officers for all their hard work, you know, coming in and continuing to push themselves mentally and physically and also, you know, the psychological strain that it comes with the job. And so, you know, I acknowledge that. I look forward to this facility. I hope that this facility will also be beneficial to the inmates, introducing rehabilitation programs, you know, at a different level where they can actually learn the skills on how to live and not just be confined as inmates, but learn how to transition into the, into the community. You know, if you're in a, in a facility for so many years, your mind starts to shift to survive in that facility. And so I'm looking forward to the transitioning program that you'll have as they move out of the facility and try to give them the tools that they need so that they, they know that this is not their last resort. They don't have to resort to the, in the old habits, you know, that we've become accustomed to. Everyone has habits, right? And so, no, it's, I hope that this will be something good for our community. I believe it will be something good for our community. And, no, I am very grateful for your work, especially you, Major Uggan. I mean, the, we've, we've, we've been through it together and, you know, I really, I really appreciate the work that you do and the sacrifices that you've made and the effort that you've put into and the countless hours that you've done trying to seek equity for, for the Department of Corrections, the officers and the facility and the inmates. So thank you. And thank you for not giving up. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Nelson. Madam Speaker, do you have any comments or questions for the panel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with my colleagues. We all agree the prison should move forward, it should be funded while we have federal funds available to us, especially, hopefully, if the infrastructure package passes in Congress that will also assist us. And so again, I congratulate you and commend you really for being prepared, right? And for these opportunities when they have availed themselves, now we can take advantage of them because of your preparation and your advocacy. And so, you know, we want to do everything we can. My concern, of course, has always been that if this money is designated for refunds, that it needs to go there, right? And then we will be looking, as Mr. Byrne says, at every other opportunity available to fund this. However, I just wanted to clarify a couple of points. So one is, if Gita could just elaborate, why they chose leaseback over a regular bond for this amount?
Thank you for that question. What we've, what we stated before is that if we do a regular general obligation bond, we are limited to a debt ceiling, we have a debt ceiling that we have to take into consideration. As of August 31, that capacity is roughly about 370 million. So if we go in to do a general obligation bond, it would take away from that 370 million. If we do a leaseback financing, and because we may be able to do it through a triple tax exemption if Gita issues the bond, we may be able to still secure lower rates even though it's with the leaseback financing. So it's very comparable to doing a general obligation bond. So that's why we were suggesting that a leaseback be used for this financing.
All right. But for this financing, for the prison, it is within the debt ceiling, actually, still?
Yes, it is.
Even if you maxed it out, the 200 million for all phases, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then I wanted to know, Mr. Byrne, you're talking about for Phases One and Two, 109 million is needed. We are only, by this bill, going to be financing maybe 80 million of that in a leaseback. And so you said you were going to find the other amounts, but there was also testimony that no ARP funds had been designated for this. And
And do you have any funds available immediately for the A and E on this? Because this is a bill to authorize leaseback financing, and the leaseback won't be ready until construction, which they estimated one year for architect, one to two years for construction, that's about three years. So do you have, does this administration have money set aside for the A and E that might need to occur immediately?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think there's two points, one of which I'll ask Greta to talk about later when I finish. But it is possible, of course, to wrap up the A and E into the leaseback. I don't know that that's necessarily being proposed here, but it's certainly possible if financing requires that. This bill provides for $5 million for fiscal 2022 only. So again, it's possible, and it's up to this body to make that determination, but it's possible that the A and E could be funded from that $5 million, I'm sure. From what I'm hearing, that that would be sufficient to fund the A and E in advance.
Sufficient, but is this bill allowing that?
I believe so. I don't know that it provides, that doesn't provide for it, but if you feel that it doesn't, then maybe you need to alter the bill.
That was another thing that we talked about earlier, remember? My original questions to you were, what is the difference between this bill, which is pledging $5 million for leaseback, and the budget bill, which also talked about $5 million being deposited into the general fund, shall be expended for costs associated with financing, design, construction, and other things? So obviously, under the budget bill, the money can be used for those purposes. It doesn't use the word appropriation, but it says it can be used for those purposes. But this bill doesn't. It says it's for leaseback, and that's why. If we leaseback, if you... The tricky part for me under this thing is that we're talking about phases that we're not going to fund for sure. That's contemplated here. We're not funding all four phases. We're funding, hopefully, we can fund two phases, but the $80 million doesn't even fund the two phases. It's only a very small part of it. Well, it's 80 over $109 million, right? So there's still a significant portion that needs to be found. And we don't know where that rest of that, you haven't, you know, said if there's any other money available for it. No ARP funds have been designated for this yet, and, you know, so normally, yeah, the legislature demands to see where is the financing going to come from for the rest of it, right? What are we all going to promise in this? Not just us, right? Not just pledging potential refunds, but what are we going to put up on all sides? Which of the federal funds that the administration has received are going to be put up for this? Or, you know, I appreciate DOC has actually committed that this will cut down overtime, and I'm hoping that that's like a commitment on their part, that they are going to work on cutting down overtime so we can continue to fund it over the long term. But, yeah, so there's still some portions of this missing. We're only financing 80 over the $109 million, and I'd like to see where the rest is going to come from in a very concrete way, if possible. This is, you know, much more doable than the billion dollars that we need for the medical facility, right? So...
Well, yes, thank you, Senator. I mean, first of all, I think the plan covered 80 years. That's kind of beyond all our lifetimes here. So I'm sure there are many decisions that future legislators are going to have to take during the course of that time period. But that shouldn't stop us from planning ahead. I think that's an excellent approach to take. As Director Carbonino said, there is more than a... It's a probability, or even a certainty, of a reduction in operating costs, in particular overtime. And that certainly could be viewed as a source of funding for the capital project, you know.
Right.
I know it won't be realized until at least some part...
Right. Three years from now.
Some part of it is finished.
Three years.
But maybe I'll ask him to comment, but maybe that some of it will be realized on the completion of Phase One, which is less than the $109 million.
Perhaps. I'm just concerned a little bit about the A and E as well, because we're, you know, we're trying to do A and E for four phases, but we're only going to be constructing two phases of it. And so, you know, do you enter into a leaseback for that, for that design, when that contractor's not necessarily the one that's going to do all four phases? That's why I'm asking, if you can fund the A and E upfront and separate it from the construction, that might be more practical for these, this particular circumstance, is where we have four phases. Anyways, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll wait for the next round.
Thank you. We'll now begin with Senator Perez. Do you have any questions, ma'am, at this point with the panel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to everybody on the panel and to my colleagues. So, yeah, there was a mention about potentially covering the gap in funding using compact impact funds. So this question is for Director Byrne. How much did we receive last year, or on average, how much have we received in compact impact funds? And where did we use it for? And it could be potentially directed to covering the gap here.
Generally, and I'm speaking from the top of my head, Senator, we generally receive something around of north of $6 million a year for compact impact funds, which I'm sure we've all pointed out hardly compensates for the costs that we incur as a result of the compact. We, I can't tell you offhand how much of that we've spent this year, because we've got a number of years that we tend to use, because it's only $6 million, we parcel it out very carefully. So I can't tell you how much of each year that we've spent, but I can certainly get that information to you.
Thank you. And this, funding the construction of the Department of Corrections with that, are we authorized to use it for that?
We can use it, yes. We, you know, it's there to be used, obviously, in relation to projects that cost us money because of the compact, but generally, it's, the governor has the authority to use it on whatever she pleases.
Okay, thank you. So this question is for, I guess, for Director Byrne again. So, you know, we're contemplating, so our debt service currently annually is roughly, I believe, $49 million. Is that correct?
Yes, Senator, there's special conditions this year, right? But it's, that's what was testified to by Greta, yes.
Okay, so $49 million. And then now we have, these two projects would pretty much double that, almost double the amount of debt service to the government. I mean, considering that we, this is the first time we would be getting EITC reimbursement, it makes sense that we can utilize some of that funding. But, yeah, I guess it's predicated, that's the assumption, that now that we have this windfall, we can direct it to these very much-needed projects over 50 years old, and they've definitely outgrown their use and their life spend.
Right. You know, we've been able to reduce debt service by working away at it in order to make sure, as I mentioned earlier, that we can get the best financial terms. And, I mean, if you can actually use that to achieve these projects that I also was speaking about earlier, that's not a bad use of the funds.
And then also regarding maturity dates, are there any debts that will be maturing so that it kind of frees up the debt load on the government?
If I may, I'll defer to Greta on that, because I think they've got the schedule.
All right, thank you. Yeah, so I would like to maybe refer that question to Tina from Greta. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Let me just pull up the sheet. So we have the... We have the 2011 BPT bonds, last payment fiscal year 2022, that will be paid down.
And how much was that for?
Now, what happened here, Senator, is we floated these bonds in 2021, I mean, 2011, but we refinanced most of it with the 2021 bonds, BPT refunding bonds, to get a better interest rate. And so, so those bonds have picked up some of those interest rates. So, yes, we stopped paying on that, but then we start paying on the other bonds going forward.
So perhaps maybe a listing would be good to take a look at later on. You may not have all the info, but if you can provide that listing of maturity dates.
Yes. Just so you know, we do have a, what we call the Long-Term Debt Abstract. It's available on the Greta website, and there's a sheet in there that details the annual debt service for each of the bonds.
Thank you so much. Okay, so this question is for Department of Corrections. I don't know if you had a chance to look at the bill, if there's a copy in front of you, but it pretty much mimics the bill for the hospital. And the hospital bill basically authorizes GovGuam to lease land and in return, release back the property, the facility. Being that your plan is to build it on the property of DOC, do you see a need for that in the bill? To lease property that's...
No, Senator, that's one advantage of this project, is the land belongs to the government. It belongs to DOC, and so there will be no leasing involved.
Okay, thank you. And so I guess, yeah, I guess I want to follow up on a question, because I know this bill is touted to be a financing bill, but I can't escape the fact that it also, it also is related to procurement. And, you know, this bill is very much similar to the hospital bill, where it's a contractor, developer does a complete project from design to construction to maintenance. And so there are other models out there for, you know, the RFP for design can be separated from the construction using an IFB process. I guess this question's for DOC. Have you looked at the two options, and do you see any advantages at this point? Now, knowing that you have, you know, a master plan that was developed, you kind of have a better idea of what you're looking for, do you see more advantages to doing that approach versus the contractor-developer approach?
Senator, I know we've been talking with DPW, and we need to discuss this more regarding what are the options and what is the best, more efficient and more cost-effective way of doing it, of course. And I know that Major Uggan has met with DPW, and maybe you can expand on that.
Yes, Senator, so, you know, our thought process, of course, was the invitation for bid on the architectural services first, right? So in our master plan, one of the things we wanted to do was, we wanted to make it easier for the architect when they do, you know, if there is a contract awarded to an architect, that we put all the functional specifications in our plan, right? The cell size and what we, the square footage and what we need, so that this functional specs that, it's in the master plan, but I have a separate document of just the specs. And our idea was, this was going to go with the RFP for architectural and design services. So when the architects do come and sit down with us, you know, 80 to 90% of their information is already given to them. You know, we just need to go over the final, you know, the finer details of it, but that was what we were thinking. Now, however, whichever way this bill goes, that'll be up to the legislature to decide, but we were thinking of the invitation for bid process first, and then, once the architecture's done, then that particular design that the architect did will now go out for bid as a separate process, right? So that's what we were thinking. But again, it's totally up to this body on which avenue they decide is the best. We're just here to advocate for the new prison, and we'll leave all the money details to you guys.
Thank you so much. So another follow-up question for Greta. So I guess coming soon is probably infrastructure bills from Congress. So should, you know, the bill pass, what is Greta's next steps? Are they going to go out for the bond market, or are they going to, are we going to wait to see what funds are coming through Congress regarding infrastructure, though, so we don't have to borrow the money if the money is available in other ways?
So what we would do, Senator, is work with DOC on trying to secure the grant funding. We would possibly work with them also on a procurement for a developer to do a design, design, finance, build, maintain RFP. So if we, if we're able to secure that, what we would tell them is, we have these funds available, and just like what we did with the four schools, we said, we want to build six schools, but tell us what can you do? And they came back and said, we can build four schools with the funds you have available. And then we worked with the developer on the design, and then we financed the whole project, then we went out to the bond market and financed the project. So between the time of the RFP securing the developer, you're probably looking at about Depends on how far along the design, how far, how long it will take for the design, and then we would, then they would work with their contractors to come up with the construction So once we get the developer on board, we'd all work collaboratively with the Department of Corrections to try and finance the project that we can fund.
All right, thank you for that response. A question for OFB. So I guess in your research for the budget, do you see any opportunities for other types of funding to assist or supplement financing?
As the FY 2022 budget has passed, I think we allocated everything we've projected. As far as other fundings, again, it's been mentioned, even the ERP, we had no idea if that's going to assist or any, but as far as what was in the budget, everything projected has already been allocated, and we did put aside the $5 million from the EITC as this bill has specified.
Okay, thank you for that response. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to ask my first question with Greta, if we could just get further clarification, just as we're looking at what's the best option to pursue with regards to constructing a new facility and financing it. You know, what do we see as the benefits, the pluses or minuses between bond financing versus leaseback? Or is leaseback, you know, financially a more beneficial option to our taxpayers? If Greta can elaborate further, Ms. Garcia can give us a breakdown of that?
Yes, I certainly can. Bond financing is limited strictly to the financing of the project. Leaseback financing, having access to more of the private sector services to include A and E, to include tapping onto their construction companies, as well as to have a maintenance contract for the 30 years. With leaseback financing, that's key to having, it's key to having a maintenance contract just to ensure that the facility will be maintained for that period. And that's the only real difference between the bond financing and the leaseback financing.
What would be the financial difference? I mean, I understand doing the maintenance is going to require ongoing costs for the life of the financing part of it, but in terms of financial benefit to the ratepayers, what is going to be the most cost-effective option between the two? ratepayers, what, what is going to be the most cost-effective option between the two?
We've been working with our underwriters on this, and the financial costs for, for the leaseback financing would be about, could be anywhere from thirty to fifty basis points. So instead of paying four point five percent, we'd be paying five percent conservatively. I mean, hopefully, we could bring it in closer, but that's what we, we are estimating the cost for the leaseback financing.
And then how would that play versus bond financing?
Bond financing, we-
Just direct bond financing, and then, you know, we get the money, we go out and hire a contractor to build it, and then we part ways.
Right, right. Bond financing, and then we go right into the, working with Public Works, doing the bidding and everything. So the interest rate is, I think, for construction can go any, you know, as high as four point five, and I think with the leaseback can go as high as five percent.
So you're just talking about a point five percent difference between the two?
Yeah, yes.
And then just long-term, have we calculated what the cost would be to include the maintenance? That's the only thing I see different, aside from the fact that they pretty much are putting everything together to do the construction.
Right.
And also, I guess, put the infrastructure inside the facility itself, the furnishings and things like that that are needed. But have we looked at what the, what the price would be for that option?
I have not.
For thirty-year maintenance and then just direct bond financing to go in and do the construction and?
We have not, I, I personally have not looked at the maintenance costs for the Department of Corrections at this time.
And can we use an example? I mean, we did that with JFK, right? I mean, and, and how much do we pay in debt service? JFK is on twenty, four, twenty-five million a year? What are, what are we up to?
Right. For JFK, we are paying seven, seven million a year. And we are able to get guaranteed maintenance, security, insurance for the facility. Those are all at commercial rates, so should we ever have to make a claim to FEMA, again, having the insurance will help. We also have things like, they're able to maintain the facility, fix things quicker because they have the funds available. We know for sure that we have them, we have funds for them to change out air conditioning, painting through a required capital improvement fund that we have established. And, and so those are, are more of the requirements we have with JFK. And now they're putting in solar panels and energy efficiency.
And what other, I mean, I know we did UCU also the same way. Are there any of the government buildings that we've constructed with this, this process of?
Yes, we also have four schools.
Okay.
Under it, the, they were built by, or the developer there is the Guam Educational Finance Facilities Finance Company, GIF, and we are paying them through compact impact funds, and they are doing the same pretty much as far as maintaining the facilities. And then the third one we have is Tizen High School, and through them, we're, we've built, we've worked with them to build the gym, the GDOA building, the school facilities, warehouses, two warehouses, I believe. So those are the different arrangements we have with these developers.
Okay, and right now, we still don't have a definitive amount yet of what we're looking at. I mean, we've seen figures thrown around of five million a year, but that could be, depending on what the ultimate bids are, if you, if you have, you know, the arrangement that we have of the leaseback versus bond financing. So we really don't have a definitive amount at this point yet for either option.
Right. What we said is if we did a lease financing in today's market, we would be able to yield at least seventy-seven million for, with the five mil noted in the bill.
Okay, thank you. If I can ask DOC, and I don't think it's so much that, you know, the can has been kicked down the street, it's just the taxpayers of Guam, you know, between the option of building a new school and other facilities, the more beneficial to the public, you know, it's more welcoming. The thought of improving the standards and quality of life of individuals that have offended our community doesn't ride as well. People are not as welcoming to that, even though we understand they're also human beings that need to be treated appropriately for the time that they're incarcerated. I wanted to ask with regards to location of the building, I, I understand from the layout where it's at, but I wanted to know why so close to the boundary on that side of the property versus, you know, what would your buffer be to the, there's not as many residents in that area, it's a little more scattered on that side of the DOC compound, but there are residents there nevertheless? What is your buffer from where you're going to locate, considering the size of your property, it's quite sizable? Why that particular spot, which is almost to the boundary of that back fence that you have? I just want to get some feedback on the location.
Okay, ma'am, one of the, it's going to be thirty feet from the, what is, the access road. So this is what tentatively is being planned. One of the difficulties, of course, there's, there's, it's not a level ground, the area is not leveled, so the, the planner was saying that it might cost more if we tried to bring the facility even more deeper into the, the property line, because then we're going to have to have a lot of land, land movement, you know, to level off the property. So those were considered some of the options for us when we were planning this. And then a lot of the, if we destroy, break down all the other facilities, some of that debris will, will be implanted into that area so we can level off the location. So initially, we were thinking about having, of course, the eminent domain and clearing off the, the boundaries for our facility. But we, being that this facility is going to be enclosed, the, how far it is from the other, the building, the private property or what have you, will really have no consequence because there will be no way that somebody can throw any contraband or scale this building the way it's going to be designed. It's going to be totally enclosed with, of course, the, you know, lighting fixtures and the windows that will be, give a natural light into the facility.
Well, do you, do you think thirty feet? I mean, you and I are, give or take, a few feet, thirty feet from each other. That's not a big distance.
Yeah.
I'm not a good thrower, but I'm sure I could throw something beyond you right now, right? Might a softball in my hand, might not be on target, but I think I can get beyond where you're sitting. I'm just bringing up in terms of the buffer, I mean, if your boundary is where your, your current access road is, it just, I, I don't know eventually what surrounding landowners, what their plans are, certainly for their property, but even for DOC, is that enough of a setback from?
Well, right now, we're working with a land management right now, and they, they are doing the survey of the location to make sure. It's been many, many years since we did this, you know, since the inception of the, the original Department of Corrections. So we wanted to find out where are all the markers to make sure that, you know, where, where our boundaries are. So I think we'll probably make some adjustments once we get that all. They already came to, did an initial assessment of our land, our property, and so we hope to have a better, clearer idea of where, where that is and, you know, what area we're going to have the, the facility at more accurately.
I just, I just think it's something that needs to be explored a little more, just in terms of the setback. I understand it's going to be an enclosed facility, but again, just because I don't know, and I have to tell you, I don't think eminent domain would go down very well, considering the size of your property, to want to acquire any additional private lands around there, I don't, I don't think, and I don't think the legislature probably would vote for it.
Absolutely.
But, but I think that's something that needs to be looked at. I understand what you're talking about with earth moving, but, but having that setback further from your boundary line, I think, would be beneficial. I think it would be more, I think that'd be more, I'd give certainly the public a greater comfort level if there was a, a better setback than thirty feet, because that's not very far.
Yeah, I guess, we'll, I, I will take that into consideration for sure. And, you know, we don't want it too close to any roadway. In fact, you know, it's going to be far away from the, the current roadway that we, we currently have, where we're having some difficulties with contraband being thrown from the highway. Yeah, so.
And I, and I understand, I mean, you go to major cities, you can be walking by a building, and it can be a corrections facility, and you don't notice it. I mean, it's, you know, they're high risers, you just don't really, unless you're from there and register, you're walking by a prison, you wouldn't know. So I understand where you're coming from with regards to that, I just think that should be taken into consideration. I have one other question, Mr. Chair, but my time's up, I'll, I'll do it on the next round. Thank you very much. Thank you for your responses from DOC and from GIDEA. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Addo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just like to thank the panel, DOA, Revantax, GIDEA, and OFB for, and DOC for coming out and giving us this presentation on, on the bill. Just a few comments, Mr. Chairman. You know, I agree, my, my colleague who spoke previously on kicking the can down the road, I believe that over the many years, maybe ten years ago, Senator McCready also brought up the issue of a new prison and the viability then versus now, perhaps are different circumstances, different priorities and things like that, but it has been spoken about previously. Over the years, just to be fair to this legislative body, to the administration of DOE, uh, DOC, that this, this legislature has passed numerous bills to help support DOC in both hiring, retention, paying overtime. And I think we've always been there to try and do what we can to ensure that DOC meets its mission, most especially its obligations to the men and women up at the facility. It's just my hope, Mr. Chair, that this bill passes and we start getting into the nuts and bolts of things and looking at moving forward, that the administration, along with DOC and everyone else, looks and favors our local companies to hire every, to, to be the forefront of A and E, project management, construction. Let's do everything that we can, just like in the hospital bill. I mean, we're looking at two, three hundred million dollars to do what we can to ensure that our local companies will be able to benefit, and our people will be able to benefit from these government projects. I mean, when we're looking at almost one point five to one point eight billion dollars in construction for the next several, several years, let's do what we can to help our own people. And let's do what we can to ensure that everything stays locally. I can understand we may need experts from, from the mainland that are experts in the, in this field, but our people are just as talented and just as qualified than, than anyone else out there. So please, that is my ask of this, this administration and this panel, is to ensure that we do everything that we can to empower and provide and support our local companies. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Addo. Senator Bloss, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To DOC, we, we know about the overtime costs and that this would help to greatly reduce this, but can you give us some ideas to what your annual maintenance costs are? Your maintenance costs? Can you give us some ideas to what your?
Senator, we don't have, our ASO is still putting some of the numbers, but, you know, a lot of our maintenance, Senator, you know, if we were to, you know, go one hundred percent on all the maintenance that's needed today, I mean, a lot of times, our maintenance is, is, is as needed. Something happens, we get a purchase order, we get materials, we fix it, and we move on. But if we were to, to really finance, you're, you're, you're talking probably several millions a year on, on, you know, spending to keep that place running. And some of the maintenance has been deferred. I'll be honest, some of our stuff, we have been deferred, you know, but we do try our best to, to prioritize what we're repairing and what needs to repair, leaks, plumbing leaks, electrical and, and air conditioning are usually the three things we, we keep struggling with. Building structures, the structure of the buildings and things like that is another issue. Locks, you know, the locks need to be upgraded. Right now, a lot of the locks are not upgraded. We did the three, the three units a few years ago, but that was like five years ago, the three units, but we have eighteen housing units altogether. And so we'll work with the ASO and get, you know, more on how much we spent, but even that number is probably going to be a little bit lower than it should be because we defer a lot of maintenance, and, and we try to prioritize what we can and cannot fix immediately. But we will work on getting those exact numbers for you, Senator.
I would appreciate that, because another thing that I want, I'm interested in is, obviously, you know, you, you, you've got some spend priorities with regard to repairs. What is that estimate right now? If you were to give a ballpark for your conservative estimate of your immediate repair needs, what would that be right now?
Sir, I'm thinking around a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars at this time. If I, I have to look, we just finished renovating Post Eighteen where the Guam Behavioral Health Unit is. We saved a lot of money just using inmate labor, but just on the raw materials itself, it was over fifty thousand dollars. I mean, the air conditioning, I mean, one of their facilities, the air con for that location was about twenty-five thousand dollars. It's just, it's an enormous amount of money that we're looking at, but if we had, right now, we have Post Five, which is, should be condemned, really, given its current situation. Every time, you know, we fix one thing, it's, something else breaks down. The electrical panel is outdated. Just last year, we have been having problems with our leaks in our, for our water system. One of the units, the water has been down for, or very slowly, very weak, the, the water system, that we had to use some buckets to, you know, to make some accommodations. So we got with Guam Water Works, and we found a leakage there that, you know, it's been there for ages. We fixed that, but then again, we, after we fixed that, we found out that some, the meter's showing that there's another leak somewhere. So it's a constant thing, we're not talking about galvanized pipes, you know, that we no longer use at, at the present time. But if, I would like to have additional money for that location, those locations, but I, I'm just thinking we need about a hundred fifty to two hundred thousand dollars just to get us up to standard where it's, you know, the plumbing, the electrical, the lighting, the air conditioning systems. We just, we just got, got some generators, a generator for a GANIA, and that cost a lot of money. I think it was thirty-five thousand dollars. It costs another fifteen thousand dollars to hook it up. So, and, you know, we, we reached out to DPW, but they said that they need, we need to hire somebody because that requires some additional expertise to, to connect. So again, that's my estimate, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. What are your annual utility payments? Utility costs?
Close to a million.
How much?
Close to a million.
And water and power?
Yes.
What's your average, what's your average power consumption? I mean, monthly?
I think we're looking at over a hundred thousand. As a matter of fact, when we, when I first took over the leak that he was talking about, that was very problematic. It was costing the, the Department of Corrections and the government over a hundred thousand a month, just because it was a major water leak. I think it was Post Sixteen that didn't even have water because, or the water was, you know, very scarce going into that post because of that, that major water leak. But we managed to get that fixed through DPW without too much cost afterwards, and it's been a little bit better now, the bill, but you fix one, another one pops up.
Okay. What about FEMA projects? Did, did you have any facilities, any repairs or renovations as a result of FEMA? Major?
Senator, no, Senator. Most of the, we had one or two, I guess, with the streetlights and things, some lights that fell down during the storms. But no, we have no major FEMA projects ongoing right now.
No, but did you ever have?
Years, years ago, we had the fence line. When there was a big typhoon and the fence line broke down, we had FEMA money to repair the fence on the exterior side. We also did a DOI project in Agania, maybe three, four, four years ago, maybe, with the Agania fence, where it was all had to be changed out. And that was all Department of Interior money. That's the only FEMA I could really recall at this time, or in federal, federal projects.
Okay. What about insurance? You guys got insurance on your facilities?
No, Senator, we do not.
So you're self-insured?
Yes, Senator.
Mr. Byrne, and as far as self-insurance, because that seems to be the common, I guess, proclamation, if you will, that Guam has for FEMA.
Well, Senator, thank you. Most of Guam, the government of Guam is self-insured. Really, it's not self-insured, it's just assuming all the risk. However, once we receive FEMA funds, we are required to take out commercial insurance in the future. Otherwise, they will not reimburse us for any future disaster relating to that contribution.
That'd be for a later discussion. I just, okay, because we, I also know that if we're self-insured, we have to make sure we have the funds to self-insure ourselves. And whether or not we have that right now is a, okay. So if you start to look at that, you know, what are?
Well, fortunately, we haven't suffered a major catastrophe that's infected us. But the leaseback proposal generally, we are required to have insurance.
Yes. And that's what I appreciate about this, about this process, this program, is this, is that, you know, that leaseback process. Lastly, I have waited round after round, question after question, to find out. And I appreciate the Department of Corrections putting together a very comprehensive plan. And, you know, that GIDEA is looking at, you know, how much financing can come from what we can do with $5 million. But that's the legislative, I guess, contribution to what is, what should be a priority. You need, you don't need now repairs to the prison, you need a new prison. Okay? I think there's, everybody in this room can figure that out. But what I've been waiting for was to hear from some type of commitment from the administration of the priority of this project. I feel sorry for the gentleman, for the three gentlemen sitting to my left here in that, you know, they're basically begging, pleading for this. But I haven't heard yet any commitment other than you go for it from the administration, other than, you know, hoping that a spending package gets passed by Congress, which last week, you know, wasn't getting anywhere. And even in that spending package, we're not too sure whether or not there's that money that's there. Has there been any, can anybody give me from the administration, other than what we've heard already so far, what further commitment this administration has to fixing this longstanding issue? Or are we just going to rely on the $5 million?
Senator, I'm not sure what commitment you're looking for. We're here because we're committed. We wouldn't be here if we weren't committed.
It's kind of interesting because you were here last week on a commitment that was also based on a $300 million set aside for monies that could have gone to the community. But I heard nothing of that same commitment for corrections. And, Mr. Byrne, I understand. You're just, you don't make those decisions. I'm just hoping, I was hoping that sometime in this process, we can get that same kind of commitment for the Department of Corrections. And we're not asking for, surely they would appreciate $300 million. But anyways, I, my time is up.
Thank you, Senator Bloss. Senator Pito-Talay, do you have any questions for the panel?
Mr. Chair, and I just want to thank the panel for their testimony this morning. But I have a couple of questions that I wanted to ask. And I don't know if I am on the right track to ask this question because I'm just concerned about, you know, some of the fundings that's coming in and some of the things that are not being done, that have to be done. And one of the things that I want, my first question, and I just want to ask the Director, Joe, because I am concerned about if we don't meet the mandates of the prison, do we fear that maybe the federal receivership is going to come in and take over?
Senator, that's always been the, that's always been the threat, of course, throughout the years. It's not just, you know, now. It's always been the case, right? There's a lot of mandates that the Department of Corrections is required to fulfill. And if some of those mandates are not required, then of course, you may even have the federal government coming into play, like pre consent decree because of the, you know, deplorable working environment, the facilities itself, you know, meeting the standards. So yes, to answer your question, those are possibilities.
Okay. Joe, another thing that I wanted to ask is that, I understand that, you know, the Agana Lockup accommodates federal prisoners. And I'm not sure if Mangilo accommodates federal prisoners. So I'm pretty sure that some of the federal money are coming in to supplement the expense of the Governor of Guam. Another thing that I wanted to ask, Joe, is, you know, we talk about so many, I think we have an average numbers of prisoners right now, about 700, 700 some, or 600 some?
We average somewhere around 500, 600.
Five to 600. And, you know, and the Chairman actually can support me on this because we have touched base with some of the judges at the court regarding alternative sentencing for misdemeanor and below. And that has not come about, for what, I don't know. But I am sure that we can cut down the numbers of prisoners annually if we get into that on just alternative sentencing passage. So I just want to ask you, what is your take on that, Mr. Director?
That's been a constant subject brought up between us and the courts. We've had those discussions. And we just need to, you know, to further try to get that into the agenda, especially with the pandemic, the current situation with the pandemic. We've been in constant communications with the courts and they've actually been helpful in cutting down some of those, like, those court commitment or warrants that they've, they recently assisted us in limiting the pickups on warrants to, based on their administrative order that they recently issued to just felony, felony cases. So you're right, misdemeanors and below should, you know, be, you know, probably subjected to electronic monitoring if that's, you know, an alternative measure.
Okay. Another thing that I wanted to bring about, because this was being discussed on several occasions with, with actually the management of DOC regarding, do you have reservists at the Department of Corrections right now?
We have the policy that was already put in place. It's just difficult trying to recruit people and getting them interested. We've, I think we've tried, Major, right, to advertise at one point in time, but we haven't been successful. I think the most optimal candidates that we could probably get is those people that retired, you know, that have already the experience. That's probably the candidates that we would be looking at bringing in for reserves.
And I would think if that, that, you know, recruitment of reservists comes to a reality, I think it would help out with the, with the numbers of tasks that you, the Department of Corrections, are charged with. Joe, you know, during the last session, we took out $1 million from the Department of Corrections to actually pay Guam Memorial Hospital. Because, you know, you know, all the inmates that are being referred to GMH, you know, and there was an outstanding balance of DOC not paying Guam Memorial Hospital. Has that been taken care of?
Yes, Senator. We've, we've been taking care of our hospital bill.
Okay. What about the commissary, commissary program that we, we passed during this last session? Is it ongoing or is it being prepared? Is it done or is it?
Oh, Senator, right now, it's in the, it's in the office of the GSA. We, one of the requirements, of course, is that in order for us to do this bid for the commissary, they have to be trained, the individuals doing the bid need to be trained with, what's this, procurement courses. GSA has that opportunity because they have the resources for that. But we already, since last year, we met twice with GSA regarding that. And so we're just, we'll keep pushing for that to be, you know, pushed forward and put out for bid. We have already have the plan, how we're going to implement it, and we just need to get that approval.
Because at one point, I heard that an RFP has been issued out for the, for the commissary program?
No, Senator, the RFP. But what we did is we worked on the scope of work at DOC, and we drafted the scope of work and how we, how we envisioned this commissary working. And then we handed it over because nobody in the, in the Department of Corrections, you know, we're not able to run with that RFP. We had to send it over to GSA. And we've met with them on it. We've given them everything. And it's, you know, now they're, they're the ones that will put it out for, for requests for proposals. But again, we're just waiting on GSA right now. So, but as of now, no, no RFP has went out yet.
Thank you, Major. Thank you very much. Joe, thank you very much. Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Pito-Talay. Senator Clinton, you have any questions for anyone on the panel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. My question is for Lawelen from OFB. Actually, correct me if I'm mistaken, but I believe you worked at OPA previously. And I'm wondering, were you there during the time when some audits were done with regards to the prison? And if so, what do you recall from, from any of those?
Yes, Senator, you're correct. I was formerly, before OFB, I worked with OPA for about 14 years. And about, maybe about 2014, I worked on the facility audit. And as I mentioned here, we recommended that the inefficiencies, the overtime, all of these can be, are, need to be addressed. And part of our recommendation was them to start the facility master plan, which they just accomplished. So since 2014, and even I think we did an audit in 2009 about their overtime. So all these concerns were talked about many years ago when I was in OPA.
Okay, thank you. I also have a question for DOC. I'm not sure if this was asked already, so if it was, forgive me. But how much money do you receive from the federal government for federal detainees annually?
Give me a second, Senator. I'll pull it up. So for the U.S. Marshals, federal detainees, we receive $102 a day. And for INS, $75 a day.
Do you have an approximation of how much it is total annually?
To date, for 2021, we received $292,000.
Okay, thank you. Also, with regards to the plans for the, for the facility, are the costs separated out in terms of just plain old construction versus the IT systems and similar equipment and supplies?
They're separate. Those are separate.
Senator, yes. In doing our plan and the cost thing, we did, it's broken down camera system, IT technology is all broken down. Each have their own costs that make up the total cost of the project.
Okay, thanks. But the idea is to fold it all into the entire construction costs. Is that correct?
Yes, Senator. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator, Senator Rajo. I'd like to thank the panel for showing up today. Senator Brown?
I just have one more question. I don't, if you've completed the rounds, I did have one more question I wanted to ask.
Okay, we'll allow that one, and then we'll wrap it up, okay? Because we're going to, we're going to close the questions at this point and go to comments and amendments only. Thank you. Go ahead. Yes, yeah, ask your one question, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask DOC, just quickly, sort of two questions. But with regards to your facility down here, do you keep your federal detainees here at, here in Agania or Hagatnia? Or do you keep them at your, your facility in Mangilo?
The federal detainees are, for the most part, kept at the Hagatnia Detention Facility.
When you, when you build your new facility, were you consolidated? Or will you still have the need for the facility here in Hagatnia? Or are you going to consolidate it in your new building? What are the plans for that?
The plan is to consolidate everything up at the Mangilo Facility.
And then one last quick question with regards to rehabilitation. Is that something you're incorporating into the design of your facility so that we could have active programs and projects to address rehabilitation of your inmates that you have up there? I know before we worked with a conservation farming and, you know, to be able to generate through farming their, their own fruits and vegetables and be able to, you know?
Absolutely, Senator.
But other programs you can expand so that, we were talking about rehabilitation earlier, that the inmates could be prepared for those that are going to be released to have tangible skill sets. So I wanted to know if that's something you're actively incorporating into the design and operation of your new facility?
Absolutely. All, all their rehabilitation programs are going to be consolidated up at the Mangilo Facility with this new prison.
I look forward to that. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for that opportunity.
Because I opened the door for you to ask one question, and I see Senator Addo, Senator Bloss is waving his hand. And does anyone else have? and I see Senator, Senator Blas is waving his hand, and does anyone else have one question more? And don't go beyond one, okay? Because we already agreed, two rounds, as a gentleman and a lady's agreement, even though Senator Brown dragged it to add the rehabilitation, well, I'm in support of that program. Senator Blas, and then, and then the Speaker, and then, and Senator Perez, and then we end. Okay, colleagues? We will end it, I will gavel, and we're gonna move on to the comments and amendments. Senator Blas, sir.
And I probably gonna open up a can of worms here, but, you know, I appreciate that your whole plan is to consolidate the detention. But is that your responsibility? The detention?
The, the Department of Corrections is responsible for both detention and, as well as,
What does the Marshals have to do with it?
Detainees and inmates, we're responsible for both.
Major?
Okay, so the federal detention facility, sir, I know we call it the federal detention facility because it was money that was used back in 1998, I believe, or 97, when they built that, that facility there. But that actually belongs to DOC, Gov Guam. It belongs to the government of Guam. The reason why they called it federal detention is because, of course, they, they paid for it. Back then, I think it was about three to four million dollars for it. And in our MO, our agreement with the Marshals, we agreed to a certain amount of bed space to have available for them in the event they needed space for their U.S. detainees. And then any extra space, we, we would use for our local detainees. So, and even right now, we still hold true to that. So if the U.S. Marshal says, hey, we're bringing in 30 people right now, we need space, then we would make room in that federal detention building and make adjustments so that we could house them. But that building actually does not belong to the Federals, it belongs to the government of Guam and DOC.
Okay, I appreciate who belong, who it belongs to, the, the building, but the responsibility. I thought there was a question and there was a discussion several years back about what your role, DOC's role is for detainees.
We have an interg- intergovernmental agreement with the U.S. Marshals to house their local, their federal detainees here, and, and the same with immigration.
What about local? Marsh, yes, Superior Court?
No, again, sir, based on Guam law, based on Guam law and our missions to our, our enabling act, the Department of Corrections shall be responsible. So in, in 1990, around 1995, the detention was in Manila called TDC.
Yes.
And that was under the auspices of the Guam Police Department. But in 95, around 95, based on what the law said, it was, it was DOC assumed responsibility for all local detainees.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that-
Because the care of a local detainee is actually an executive function. It's an executive function which is our function as far as DOC goes. So, you know, that's, that's why our detainee, we handle all the detainees, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Senator Blas. Madam Speaker, you have a question, then you're followed by Senator Perez, then we're gonna close this, this session. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yes, so it looks to me like if we have set aside use of ARP funds, for example, for the hospital, and are able to use that in advance of the leaseback financing, which, which, you know, we will pay or start payments on when the construction is completed, then we will save interest in the interim of the five years that it's going to take to construct that, and the three years it might, you know, similarly, the three years it might take to construct a prison. And I just, I wanted to know from Gita, what is, when you said the difference between, for this, this DOC project, you know, we can fit it within our bond limit, but you said you want to, or that it was comparable at this point, and you talked about a 5% on leaseback financing, like 5% interest, and bond financing up to 4.5%. What does that equate to in numbers and amount instead of a percentage? That's my question. Oh, I just want to get this as numbered, there, there are, of course, our financing consultants.
That would be, instead of 5 million, we'd be paying 4.6 million per year.
And then- That's on the 80, sorry, on 80 million financing?
On, I, I still have it at 77 million.
Oh, okay, so you, you calculated, just go ahead, 77 million, and you, you said, instead of,
Instead of 5 million, we'd be paying 4.6 million.
And that is overall or annually?
Annually.
Annually, okay. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Madam Speaker. I was hoping she was gonna say more money, but that's okay. Senator Perez, you have a question?
I think I'll pass, thank you, I had it answered, thank you.
You have it answered, thank you. My colleagues, I thank the panel for being here today, and we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna dismiss you. Thank you all for coming. Please don't hesitate to visit us more often. You know, it's always good to get, yeah, but thank you very much. We will, we will reset for at least a couple of minutes, just a couple of minutes, just so if anyone needs to go and get a drink or whatever, can take care of that. And then we'll be right back to start the comments and amendments. Thank you.
Committed hold, callback to order. My colleagues, we are now on the so-called third round, which is technically is comments or amendments. And you have five minutes, so please use your time wisely. We will begin with, I'll start with Senator Jim, so it's more than likely he doesn't have one, but as a matter of fact, why don't I just go down the list of all the amendments? And we'll process it. I have TMT, oh, I got Speaker. I have your amendments, you have two, and they're listed as ASB 153, TMT, L 16, page 12 to 13, or the line 7, P 10. Page 10. Which one, Madam Speaker, will you be proffering first?
I'll do page 10, line 7 first, yes.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this amendment is to Section 90308, the pledge of the $5 million in revenue. And on the fourth item, where it says other financing options can be used, including bond financing and other alternate funding options, I'm adding the words "subject to legislative approval." I just don't want to be approving a bond in here without any of the details of the bond. So that's the amendment, Mr. Chair. This is the same amendment that I made to Bill 121.
I'm only concerned, Madam Speaker, I like your amendment, but it includes grants? Only because you're concerned more of the bonding, and I fully support you on that one.
Item three also allows the governor to use federal funds, which includes grants, I think.
All right, okay then, thank you. Does anyone would like to speak to this amendment? I see no hands. Do I see an objection? There being none, amendment passes. Madam Speaker, your next amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Page 12 to 13, line 16. This is an amendment to Section 90310. It's the IT portion, so according to this section of the bill, it requires specs for prison information management system, security and surveillance system, and building management systems to be in the specifications for the new correctional facility. My amendment is to change the word "shall" to "may," so they may include it in case they need, or it's more, gives us more value if we separate any of those items out. Just like, I know that DOC has been trying to, you know, have part of its information system funded by the CJAC, the criminal justice, you know, access system, and so those types of things. Just this allows, the "may" will allow them to separate any of those items if it's more valuable, gives us more value, instead of requiring them to include it, and then we pay interest on, on just things that they could have procured separately. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker, allows the flexibility. Does any colleague would like to speak to that? I see no hands. Are there any objection? There being none, amendment passes. Madam Speaker, I think that completes your, all your amendments, correct?
Yes, it does, Mr. Chair, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Now we proceed to ICFFB, Senator Blas, yours is on line 8, page 14.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, this is actually in behalf of colleagues, Senator Telahit and I as well. This amendment, my colleagues, is similar to an amendment that was placed in the, in the GMH bill, Bill 121, which basically requires a financial plan, or that the financial plan is put in place. And that this plan is transmitted to the Speaker, and that no solicitation or invitation to bid authorized to effectuate the requirements of this act may be issued into delivery of the plan to the Speaker. All I is asking for is, is the financial plan.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Are there any, I see no hands for comments or questions? Are there any objection? There being no hands, amendment passes. We will now proceed to, I think, Senator Perez. I'd just like to remind my colleagues that you'll find most of these amendments are almost identical, except that the bill number is the only difference. So just think about it, and then we'll move along with it. Senator Perez, you have a few. Which one do you want? Line 25, or line 19, or line 15? Which one would you prefer, ma'am?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to start with line 15, page 9. It's to add a new subsection to the bill to read M 2017 Guam Tropical Energy Code. Like you said previously, it mimics the previous bill, where by including this, it would help to reduce energy costs to at least 50%. So, you know, when we look at the, the utility cost that was provided during the testimony, they spent, I think, over a million dollars, but that, that was perhaps just for water. But for power, it's about the same amount, and so we're talking about reduction of cost. That would definitely help to, you know, we can use that funds more effectively in other parts, for other operations, and also save the, the environment at the same time.
Thank you for, thank you for your amendment, Senator Perez. Pretty much the same as Bill 121. Does anybody have any comments? There being none, any objection? None, amendment passes. Senator Perez, your next amendment, please.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. The next one is page 7, line 19 to 21. To amend the bill to read, Department of Corrections shall solicit requests for proposals for a contractor developer. And so this is basically language to clarify that in the initial bill, it sounds like we're just looking for one request for proposal, we're actually seeking multiple requests for proposals to increase the competitive edge. So it's very similar to what I proffered in the previous bill.
Thank you. Does anyone like to speak to that? There being none, any objection? I see none, amendment passes. Senator Perez, your next amendment.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this one is on page 6, line 25. To amend the bill to read, Government of Guam is authorized to lease property that will be used for the new Department of Corrections as required to the Guam Economic Development Authority. So again, this, this mimics the previous bill, in which wanted to tighten the language that when we lease property, it's specifically for the site of the project, and not just any government of Guam property.
All right, does anyone like to speak to that? There being none, any objection? I see none, amendment passes. Your last amendment, Senator Perez, please?
Actually, there's two, so I'll go with the one that's already in the drive, and that's the one on page 14, line 3 to 7. It's to delete Section 90314, which would expedite permitting using any and all steps necessary. And so again, you know, runs the risk of circumventing any important regulatory laws, should we keep the language in there. And I think there's other means to expedite without having to circumvent these very important regulations.
All right, are there any who would like to speak to that? Are there any objection? There being none, so ordered. I think you have one more, right?
Yes, it probably just got uploaded. It's page 7, line 22.
Yeah, does, my colleagues all have, can you all see that on your, on your drive? Just want to make sure that nobody's, just refresh your drive, and you, and it should All right, does, I hope everybody sees it. Senator Perez, if you can go ahead and read your amendment, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's page 7, line 22, to amend the bill to read, consistent with this is chapter, GITA is also hereby authorized to solicit the services for a program management office, which shall include but not limited to creating scopes of work, coordinate projects, performance targets, conduct periodic quality control reviews, assure timely product generation and response, and manage the project to produce a quality product with the budget and schedule. So, yes, so this also mimics the previous bill, where we want to ensure that the, whoever the contractor developer is, is meeting the, the performance targets, and that we're getting the best value for what we're paying for. And there's accountability in this, improving accountability through the process, especially for these long-term construction projects. We need, we need that expertise to see if the product that they're producing, the contractor that we have, is building to our specs.
Does anyone like to speak to this? If not, are there any objection to this amendment? There being none, amendment is, and I think, Senator Perez, we've completed all your proffered amendment, correct?
Yes, that, that's correct, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Going down the list here, if I ask Senator Clinton or Senator Mendez to, will I make the amendment? Or, or if you can read the amendment, it's just to add the names. Senator Clinton, if you, if you can just read the amendment, that, that'll work.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, there's two amendments.
Oh, not that one, no. It's, it's just, it's, let, let's take a quick recess while I get the right amendment out, all right?
Okay, we are back from recess. Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to introduce the, the amendment, which is, is to add Senator Talina Cruz Nelson and Senator Chris Rhenius as co-sponsors to the bill of 153.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just want to further amend Senator Sinagastin's amendment and include all members unless they have any objections on being included on this bill.
Okay, there's a further amendment to allow all members to be listed as co-sponsors of the bill. Are there any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. Now on the main amendment, since it's been amended, any objections to the main amendment, which is now to allow everyone's, all members to be listed as co-sponsors? Any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. Senator Sinagastin, you're recognized. Was that, was that your final amendment? Okay, we're back from recess. Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, my colleagues. You'll find it on line 20, page 11. It's to amend the, the bill to read, $8 million, $80 million for the following purposes. That's the only add part, because you see on the bill, that was, it was empty. My failure, your fault. Thank you.
Okay, anyone on the amendment? I'm sorry, please, Senator Sinagastin, could you reread the page and the line number, and then the amendment again, just so we have it clear?
Line 20, page 11. To amend the, the bill to read, $80 million for the following purposes. It's basically to fill the void that's there.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. Speaker Telahit, you're recognized.
Thank you. I want to commend the author for this amendment. There was a huge void in the bill with a blank, and so $80 million sets a, a limit of the financing. So of course, the $80 million doesn't match the $109 million for phases one and two, which seem, they seem to want to do together. And so it, it puts everyone on notice as well, this amendment, that we're financing 80 out of 109 million that is necessary. And so, you know, the administration is going to have to come up with the balance of these funds, and hopefully sooner rather than later, because this is the financing part. If they can come up with the federal money, if that part of the ARP funds can be used, or hopefully the infrastructure new bill that's coming out, or any other fund savings that they can make from operations, that they can put it towards this project, so that it can, we can plan to complete the $109 million worth of phases one and two, then that, that's what's necessary. And we are moving on this bill without knowing where they intend to get the 109. The administration would not commit to any source of that funding at this point, this morning. And so I just think- And so, I just think that should be clear to us, right? We're voting to allow $80 million of funding without really having a clear idea from the administration where they're going to get the remaining amount to get up to 109. And, but, you know, we want them to do that, and we want them to do, if they can do more, even better. The less of the 80 that we have to finance over 30 years, the cheaper it will be, and the more we can use this general fund money for other critical services. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Anyone else on the amendment? Any objections to the amendment? Seeing none, motion carries. Senator Sinagastin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that Bill 153-36-COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, Housing, and substitute and amended in the Committee of the Whole, with recommendation of the Committee of the Whole to be placed on the third reading file.
On the motion, that it be placed in the third reading file with recommendation of the Committee of the Whole, hearing no objections, motion carries.
Now, recess.
We'll take a moment's recess. Okay, we're back from recess. Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, notwithstanding the House rules, I move to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill 121 as amended, substituted, and further amended in the Committee of the Whole for the purpose of adding co-sponsors to the measure. Thank you.
On that motion, any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. Senator Sinagastin?
Mr. Chair, I move to add, to add, to add all my colleagues to the, to be co-sponsors of Bill 121, unless there's an objection.
On the motion, there is a motion to include all members of the legislature as co-sponsors of Bill 121. Are there any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. Senator Sinagastin, you still have the floor.
I move to place Bill 121 as amended, substituted, and further amended in the Committee of the Whole into the third reading file. To do so, I say.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing none, motion carries. We stand in recess.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to rise from the Committee of the Whole with the recommendation that Bill numbers 130-36 LS, as substituted and amended in the Committee of the Whole, Bill 121-36-COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, Housing, and substituted on the floor, and further amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, and further amended in the Committee of the Whole, and Bill 153-36-COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, Housing, and as substituted and amended in the Committee of the Whole, be placed on the third reading file.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing and hearing none, motion carries. Now, we stand at recess.
We are back from the Committee of the Whole. Senator Sinagastin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to report back to the body after deliberation of Bills Number 130-36 LS, as substituted and amended in the Committee of the Whole, Bill Number 121-36-COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, Housing, and substituted on the floor, and further amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, and further amended in the Committee of the Whole, and Bill 153-36-COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation, and Housing, and as substituted and amended in the Committee of the Whole, to be placed, to place the bills stated to the third reading file.
On that motion, to place the bills on the third reading file, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries. We are... Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we go back to motions.
On the motion, notwithstanding the rules, to return to motions, is there any objection? Hearing and seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'll be making several motions to add appointments, nominations to the voting file, and for the information for the body. These were all mentioned, that I would be moving them on the session floor during the Committee on Rules meeting. So, at this time, I move to place from the Committee on Air Transportation, Parks, Tourism, Higher Education, and the Advancement of Women, Youth, and Senior Citizens, the nomination of Justin D.A. Guerra to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission onto the session agenda with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the nomination, I mean, sorry, on the motion to place the nomination of Justin D.A. Guerra on the agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
And from the same committee, the nomination of Kyle R. Mandapat to serve as member of the Parks and Recreation Commission onto the session agenda with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion to place the nomination of Kyle A. Mandapat on the session agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Shelton, you are...
Thank you very much. And from the same committee, the nomination of Rosie R. Tynatongo to serve as a member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors onto the session agenda with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion to place the nomination of Rosie R. Tynatongo on the session agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
And again, from the same committee, the nomination of Brian J. Bamba to serve as a member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors on the session agenda with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion to place the nomination of Brian J. Bamba on the session agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Shelton, you are...
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And to place the nomination of Elizabeth C. Gill as member, Board of Commissioners, Haguenya Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Board of Commissioners on the session agenda with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the nomination, on the motion to place the nomination of Elizabeth C. Gill on the session agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, to place the nomination of Felix Beneventi to serve as a member of the Board of Commissioners of the Haguenya Restoration and Redevelopment Authority onto the session agenda with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion to place the nomination of Felix Beneventi on the session agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Senator Shelton, you are...
And lastly, Madam Speaker, to place the nomination of Dr. Judith S. Flores to serve as member of the Board of Trustees of the Guam Educational Telecommunications Corporation, KGTF PBS, onto the session agenda with the recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion to place the nomination of Dr. Judith Flores on the session agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Thank you. Are there any other motions? Senator Moreland, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to reconsider the actions of the body on Bill Number 106-36-COR. Bill 106-36-COR is an act to add subsections 60109.1III and subsection 60109.1III to Chapter 60, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated. It's relative to including police precincts and government offices to the list of exceptions where the authorized individual shall not openly carry firearm or carry concealed firearm... Excuse me, Madam Speaker. That's scratch the, and government offices. It's just including police precincts. And that was as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Response, Military and Veterans Affairs, and Mayor's Council, and Public Transit. So, as amended in committee. Madam Speaker.
On the motion to reconsider the actions of the body, are there any, is there any objection? There's an objection. On that motion to reconsider, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. We are now... Are there any other motions? If not, then we are in second reading? I'm sorry, we're in legislative concurrences. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move to place into the voting file the nomination of Justin D.A. Guerra to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
On that motion to place the nomination in the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place into the voting file the nomination of Kyle R. Mandapat to serve as member of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
On that motion to place the nomination in the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, I move to place into the voting file the nomination of Rosie R. Tynatongo to serve as member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors.
On the motion to place the nomination of Rosie Tynatongo on the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, I move to place into the voting file the nomination of Brian J. Bamba to serve as member of the AB Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors.
On the motion to place in the voting file the nomination of Brian J. Bamba, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, I move to place into the voting file the nomination of Elizabeth C. Gill to serve as Board of Commissioner member for the Haguenya Restoration and Redevelopment Authority into the voting file.
On that motion to place the nomination on the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
Madam Speaker, I move to place the nomination of Felix Beneventi to serve as member of the Board of Commissioners of the Haguenya Restoration and Redevelopment Authority onto the voting file.
On that motion to place the nomination of Felix Beneventi on the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
And lastly, Madam Speaker, I move to place onto the voting file the nomination of Dr. Judith... of Dr. Judith S. Flores to serve as member of the Board of Trustees of the Guam Educational Telecommunications Corporation, KGTF PBS.
On the motion to place the nomination, nomination of Dr. Judith Flores on the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Situus massi, Senator Shelton. We are now done with legislative concurrence and we are in second reading. Senator Moylan, you are recognized. All right, we are on second reading on, on Bill number 106 after the motion to reconsider. We will now, is there any amendment you would like to make to the bill or just motion to vote? So the motion is to place Bill 106 on the third reading file? Is there any objection to the? You could just state your motion. Could you just restate your motion, Senator Moylan?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Motion that Bill 106-36-COR as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Emergency Response, Military and Veterans Affairs, Mayor's Council and Public Transit, which is an act to add subsections 601109.1III to chapter 60, title 10, Guam Code annotated, relative to including police precincts to the list of exceptions where an authorized individual shall not openly carry a firearm or carry a concealed firearm. Motion that is being placed in third reading. Madam, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the motion to place Bill 106 on the third reading file, is there any objection? There's an objection. On that motion, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Yeah, Senators, Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move to recess until 5:00 PM today for voting.
Senator Rogel, did you have an amendment to that motion?
Yes, I'd like to amend the motion to recess until tomorrow after the, after the state funeral.
Madam Chair, can we take a recess?
We'll take a one-minute recess right now. We're back from recess. Senator Shelton, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to amend my motion to recess until 7:00 PM tonight for voting.
All right, it's a motion to recess until 7:00 PM tonight for voting. As you all know, we are reconvening at 7:30 AM sharp for the state funeral for the late Mayor Doris Luhon. On that motion to recess until 7:00 PM for voting, any objection? No objection, seeing no objection, motion carries. We are recessed until 7:00 PM.